Good morning, welcome everyone to the Judiciary Committee hearing this morning, January thirtieth. My little sister's birthday. We have, this is our nine fifteen agenda. We do have a two minute time limit for both people on Zoom and in person, but if you can stick around for questions. Oftentimes members have them. And if we have a catastrophic technical failure where we can't, where we, where we lose Zoom, we will try again on tomorrow. The thirty first at nine sixteen in this room oh one six. Uh, but we will try to fix the tent. We'll stick around for a few minutes to try to stick, fix any technical problems we have. Okay, first up today is SB two eighty, Senate Bill two eighty six. Uh, this appropriates money to the Department of the Prosecuting Attorney, the City and County of Honolulu for its career criminal prosecution unit. First up on SB two eighty six is Christine Denton for the City and County of Honolulu prosecuting attorney. Or someone else. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Rhodes, Vice Chair Gabbert, members of uh, JDC. I'm Paul Ma, I'm the Chief of Staff with the Department of the Prosecuting Attorney. I'm testifying on this bill SB two eighty six. You know, this bill was introduced with this understanding in mind, you know, in the past years, the prosecutors has filed these types of bills. Because we found it to be necessary to ask for supplemental funding above the core amount that was included in the Department of the Attorney General's. Uh, budget as part of the executive budget and which we would see later, you know, under the budget worksheets, of course. Uh, there's been a significant shortfall over the years. And so what we do is we file these GIA bills in anticipation that there may be a shortfall. Because we don't always know specifically what the AGs will put, you know, as part of the allocation of their budget into these programs. My understanding is that um, the AG's is adjusted the core amount. So that this supplemental funding, you know, would be no longer necessary. And if that is the case, then the purpose of this bill. Uh, won't be necessary at all, you know, for us to do. No supplemental amount would be requested. If under the AG's budget, the allocation in the core has been increased. So we don't want to be duplicative, right? And ask for more than what's necessary. But we're just filed, we filed these bills in anticipation that we could have similar issues to prior years.
Okay, thank you. Next is uh.
And I'll stay for the next bill.
Okay, yeah, I want you to go ahead and go back to your seat.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, next is Councilman Bulisan for Kauai, Kauai County Council in support. Uh, Tina Yamaki, President Retail Merchants Association, Merchants of Hawaii, also in support. Uh, Zara Carlin in support. Okay, that's all the written testimony we have on SB two eighty six. Anyone else like to testify on SB two eighty six? Okay, seeing now members' questions. Well, you were right, Mr. Lau, come on back in.
All right.
Uh, so last year, last year, did you get, did, I mean, I know we passed it out of JDC routinely.
In the final moments of the legislative session. The funds were restored. Initially, they were cut and it did affect both. Uh, the career criminal program and the victim witness program under this second bill that we're talking about today.
Okay.
So it's the same situation for the victim witness program, uh, as faced with the career criminal.
Okay, but you did get the money.
Yes, we did. Thank you very much.
Um, the other question was, so it you, it's phrased as a GIA, but is it, it's, you're not, you didn't put in a GIA application, you know, the sort of public GIA application.
Uh, I don't believe so.
Okay, so you're just just designating.
Yes, correct. And then we've done it, I think, maybe the last five years, something like this. And it's just so that it gives us an opportunity to talk about the importance of career criminal and victim witness program.
Uh, the bill's seeking funding only for fiscal twenty five, twenty six, is that?
Well.
Why is that?
I believe it's, well, because it's for the biennium, but as I understand what happened last year. Uh, funding was only made for the first half of the biennium. And so, you know, we weren't clear about what would happen on the second half. Ideally, we would like to get the funding every year.
Okay.
Yeah, but we do it year by year because of that.
Been doing it.
Yeah, because it was in the past only approved for half the biennium.
Okay.
Um, can I speak to victim witness?
Hang on a second. Uh, any other questions for this bill?
No.
Okay, uh, in that case, let's go and move on to SB two eighty seven. This makes an appropriation for the victim witness assistance program. Um, first step on. This is City and County of Honolulu prosecuting attorney, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Rhodes. Uh, as I was saying, similar to the CCP GIA bill, SB two eighty seven. Seeks funding for the victim witness program in the event that the AG's budget doesn't include sufficient funds for the program. Um, I believe, as I've been told by representatives from the AG that they did put it into. Uh, the core and they have increased the core so that these supplemental bills aren't necessary. However, um. Unfortunately, this year, we have a new challenge, uh, that in particular that affects the victim witness program. Uh, President Trump, uh, through the Office of Management and Budget, uh, did have that uh, M twenty five thirteen. Uh, letter and order that went out that froze federal funds. And although it was rescinded, pretty much the day after under M twenty five fourteen. Uh, the fear is that, you know, a similar order from OMB could reemerge. You know, directing some modified version of the freeze to federal funds. And what that did. And why it specifically affects victim witness programs is that it affects um, the Victims of Crime Act. We, the City and County of Honolulu receives funding under this, it's known as VOKA. And the amount of money, uh, that we would lose in the event that the feds did cut that amount would be. One million eight hundred seventy six thousand five hundred forty two dollars. So. Department of the Prosecuting Attorney, um, wants to take this opportunity to inform the Senate, you know, of the possibility. Uh, you know, of a funding cut of this type. And as you can all understand. The consequences of such a drastic reduction in funding would be catastrophic to victim witness programs and services. So I wanted to put it on the Senate and later the House's radar, that in the event that the feds do go forward.
Okay, thank, thanks very much. Time's expired. Um, you can stay here this time. Uh. Councilman Bulisan from Kauai in support and Dark Carlin in support. Anyone else wish to testify on SB two eighty seven, two eighty seven? If not, members' questions? Okay, if not, uh, some of the similar questions to the previous bill. So you're only seeking twenty five, twenty six, is it for the same reason?
Yes, it's, it's just for F twenty six, twenty five, twenty six, yes.
Um, and then in the end, last year, did you get funding for this?
Yes, we did. Okay, thank you very much for that.
Yeah, I don't know what to tell you about the uh, the federal administration and we're all, we just don't know.
Yeah.
There's a lot of stuff, but we just don't know.
Understand, and you know, what we wanted to do was to put this on the Senate's radar. And you know, I'm, I'm sure it's going to affect the other counties as well. Because they all receive VOKA, but I, this is just, it basically a heads up.
Okay, other questions on SB two eighty seven? If not, thanks very much. We'll move on to SB two eighty nine. This relates ethics administrative fines establishes uniform provisions for the assessment of administrative penalties under the. State Ethics Code and lobbyist law. First up on two eighty nine is Robert Harris, Executive Director of State Ethics Commission. Good morning.
Law Chair, Vice Chair. Members of the committee that might be watching, it's great to see all of you. Um, um, this measure, uh, the, the. Kauai State Ethics Commission is in support of, it is one of our measures that we asked to be introduced. Uh, the intent is not to substantively change any of the current enforcement processes, except to allow us to issue a notice and order of a fine. Um, and then if the respondent chooses to, they can ask for a hearing and essentially have the full panoply of rights that they normally would do. But does speed up the process, which currently would involve filing a charge, having them answer, us filing a further statement of a charge. And then proceeding to hearing, which generally in total can take about six months. They hope from a respondent perspective, they may not feel the need to hire an attorney and other expenses related to this. The idea is just a faster, more expedited process, particularly in situations where the law or facts really aren't in, in contest. So. Again, we're hoping this is just a more efficient process for everybody.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next is Addison Bulisan, Councilmember for Kauai County in support, uh, Casey Talber in support. And that's everybody we had that signed up for SB two eighty nine. Is anyone else wish to testify on SB two eighty nine? Seeing now members' questions?
Yes.
Senator Samuel of Tora.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. So my reading of. This bill, which basically deletes the notice. And, and, and order portion and just automatically fines. Um. Kind of doesn't sit well with me. So. It doesn't. How are, how are you able to determine the fine if you don't give? The person who is violating an opportunity to explain? Or, or is it going to be like a ministerial fine, like a parking ticket? You're automatically, you parked here. Automatically you, you're charged like ten bucks because your meter ran out, or my understanding has always been. You give notice, the person has an opportunity to say, oh, I forgot, I didn't know I was supposed to have filed my ethics disclosure. By January thirty first, and I filed it by January thirty first, but it got caught somewhere, my, the internet went down. And then, then you could be able to assess a fine. Um, to me. You know, proportionate to the amount of violation. Like, if it's somebody who always is late, I could see you automatically finding them. But if it's somebody who has always filed on time, but then sounds like a plausible reason because a storm came in. How are you going to give a violator the opportunity to explain if you're gonna just automatically find them?
Okay, thank you very much for the question. Um, so the language you see on the first page under section two. Um, there was already a language allowing us to issue a notice and order of administrative fines specific to financial disclosures. Um, we're removing that section and then making it broad for the entire chapter. So the same language is being used. It's simply being applied for uh, any violation under the chapter, under a thousand, or the fines under a thousand dollars. So we'd still have to issue the notice and order um, in general.
So yes.
With respect to financial disclosures, there's already a specific fine amount specified. And so we'd always have to just follow that statutory fine amount. Unfortunately, it's not in this bill, it's already existing language. So if someone's late, there's a fine amount specified.
Okay.
So it's like a parking ticket.
Um, so are you saying that eighty four dash seventeen, which refers to, and I just. I've got twenty million bills of my own before I look at this one up, is specifically only for financial disclosures? It seems to me.
Yes.
It's for any violation of eighty four dash seventeen.
Yeah, so eighty four seventeen is specific to financial disclosures. Okay, so, but I mean, the intent here is typically, we will have interviewed people, we will have already heard various things. And so the intent here is simply after having interviewed somebody, sort of assessing the facts, seeing that there really isn't any dispute, be able to issue small fines. Intent below a thousand dollars. Um, and then if they disagree with that, they can ask for hearing and fully articulate their answer, legal or factual otherwise, of why that fine's inappropriate.
So, thousand dollars to us, where we make less than seventy thousand is a lot of money.
Understood, understood.
And may, and maybe small to you, but not to us. So here's my other question. What is considered a minor amount? I mean, what is it typical for failing to file within? By the deadline?
I think it's fifty dollars.
Okay, and then that's, that's listed somewhere.
Correct, it's in eighty four seventeen.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, other questions? Uh, I do, Mr. Harris, um, so. For, um. For all, for all the various areas that you want to come, well, let me back up. So you, what you're trying to do is just, what we'd like to see done is just all the different um. Possible fine areas, lobbyist disclosure and financial.
Conflicts of interest, uh.
The ethics ones.
Yeah, correct.
Um, just have the same process for anything that's less than, where the maximum penalty is, where the fine is less than a thousand dollars.
Correct, or this would be one option. I think we could still pursue the charge option as well, that be again, if there's uncertainty as law or fact, then we could still do that as well.
Okay, so that's, so if you think it's a more egregious violation, then you can.
Or where we might stand to significantly benefit from having a full answer from the respondent and writing.
But even for the, even for the, for the ones less than a thousand dollars, there is a point in the process where the person accused can say, hey, wait a minute.
Yes.
Uh, even, it's fifty dollars, but I don't want to pay the fifty dollars because I didn't do it or whatever.
Correct.
You can still challenge.
A- absolutely.
Okay, um. Okay, let me just double check.
The specified requirement here is that they'd have to um, respond in twenty days. So there is a time period by which they'd have to respond. And then they'd ask for a hearing, then they have the opportunity to go through a full.
So in terms of the process, it is something like a parking ticket. You have to respond at a certain time and you can go on and contest it if you want.
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you. Other questions, members?
Uh, yes.
Okay, go ahead, Senator Samuel of Tora.
Eighty four dash thirty one G is the process that you're referring to, where you're able to, um. Where you're able to contest. And that's just added in.
Correct.
That's the twentieth day. I, I just want to confirm.
Yeah, so that, that is essentially the, the language that you see deleted and eighty four seventeen is being picked up and put into.
Eighty four.
Correct.
To you.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, other questions? If not, thanks very much.
Thank you so much.
The next bill, SB three oh four, I believe. Yep, um, establishes positions in appropriate zones for adult services probation, the First Circuit Court. Uh, first up on three oh four is Saifaloy Agnan, Acting Probation Administrator. Oh, good morning.
Good morning, Chair Rhodes, Vice Chair Gabbert, and members of committee. My name is Saifaloy Agnan. And I'm the Acting Probation Administrator for Adult Client Services Branch of the First Circuit. Um, the judiciary stands in support of SB three oh four. The goal of probation is to help facilitate rehabilitation of the individual as a whole, not just the person in relation to the crime for which they are sentenced to probation. An over number, an overwhelming number of clients that are placed on probation have longstanding and ongoing challenges, which includes substance use. Mental health concerns, sexual deviance and anger management challenges. Often, these issues may not be associated with the current crime. However, the issues that clients often struggle with, um, which affect their poor coping skills and criminal thinking and behavior. Probation is charged with rehabilitating the whole person, which includes addressing unresolved trauma and lived experiences since childhood. Uh, probation is not solely to ensure compliance, but also ensuring that evidence-based practices are used by staff. To help the client resolve longstanding issues, to help facilitate healthy and productive growth for themselves, their families and the community. These practices include assisting clients in obtaining services, assessments for mental health, substance use, counseling. Uh, domestic violence, housing assistance, employment, uh, the list goes on. Um, like social security cards and birth certificates as well. This approach encourages clients through evidence-based practices to engage. With the court services, all the while creating pathways for success and better client outcomes. Uh, as Chief Rockenwald emphasized in a state of the judiciary address, the judiciary must evolve to meet society's changing needs. With the addition of these positions, Adult Client Services Branch will be able to distribute caseloads to align with the national standards of community supervision and will afford clients. That are in the highest need and risk level to have staff ensuring that individuals have access to services in a way that is accessible, equitable. And responsive to their unique challenges. The judiciary supports the passage of SB three oh four with proposed amendments to section one, as written in their testimony.
Thanks very much. Time's expired. Uh, go ahead and stay there. The, I don't have anybody else who signed up for SB three oh four. Does anyone else wish to testify on SB three oh four? Okay, seeing now members' questions?
You have a question.
Senator Gabbert.
So you're requesting this funding for twelve full-time positions, is that correct?
Um, yes, the amendments were eight, eight and. I believe ten positions.
Eight, one and two?
Yes.
So eleven?
Eleven.
Okay.
Oh, eleven, okay. Uh, how many do you currently have? How many positions do you currently?
Supervise offenders, total seventy seven.
Seventy seven. And you're asking for this additional eleven?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Other questions, thanks.
Yes, I, I.
Senator Samuel of Tora.
Um, so why isn't this already part of your budget?
Um, the bill surfaced and. Um, it's not a part of that budget because it wasn't accounted for in that budget.
You don't know why?
No.
Okay, because I just want to know whether or not it, this was duplicative, like it is in the budget, but this is just a fail safe in case it didn't. You know, pass, but it.
Yeah.
It's, it's actually not in the budget, so it sounds like we need to actually pass this. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, your testimony, your testimony was, I believe, that uh, there were certain ratios that would.
Yes.
That, that, that were not meeting at the moment. Is that, is that, so if, if you get the eleven positions, will the ratios?
Yes, we can better align on positions within, within each unit, um, to better service clients in the nationals, in the way the national standards are proposing.
And so right now, um. Does that mean we're not meeting the national standard ratios at the moment? How, how, how many, how many cases does an individual?
On average?
Yeah, probation officer have.
On average, um, average caseload is a hundred and sixteen.
The average is a hundred and sixteen, so that means there are some people with.
More or less.
So the higher acuity ones have somewhat less and the supposedly easier ones more.
Correct.
So what, what's the, uh, what's? So I, I think it's broken out by how difficult the cases are. So what, what's the ratio for the, the least difficult cases supposed to be?
Um, administrative risks, so that is um, the least, I believe is two hundred to one.
Okay, and what's the, what's the ratio supposed to be for the most acute?
The most acute is twenty to one.
Twenty to one, okay. Yes, that's not very encouraging numbers. Okay, uh, let me see what else I got here for you. So. In your testimony, you had different dollar amounts, um, which I won't read because they're in your testimony, um. Let's be sure I don't have any other questions. But you're still good with the dollar amounts that you had in your testimony?
Yes.
Still. So the twelfth position that originally was in there, a secretarial position, you feel you don't need that?
We feel we don't need that. It would be better utilized with the positions that we proposed.
Okay, okay, great. Okay, thanks very much, members. Other questions? If not, we'll move on. Thank you. Next up is SB three eleven, proposing amendment to the Hawaii State Constitution regarding the freedom of speech. This proposes. To provide that freedom of speech protected in Hawaii State Constitution does not include the expenditure of money to influence elections. First up on SB three eleven is Michael Older. Morning.
Morning Senators, uh, here's Mike Holder testifying for SB three eleven. Um, Citizens United has done damage to our country and our state cannot be, the damage done cannot be underestimated. Uh, it has shifted focus from elected officials from focusing on their constituents and to now special interests and now. The oligarchs who whisper in our president's ear. So I am very much in support of this bill. And I want to see and ensure it lasts and is effective, but I do have some concerns about the bill's current language. Um, I think that, for instance, the words into influence elections is pretty broad. Feel like this could, uh, fall under, it's either spending money on someone's campaign. Or it could affect nonprofit voting advocacy group groups like Right, Right Share to Vote. Uh, progressive, the Progressive Turnout Project and Resistabot. And I also feel like in a worst case scenario, a bad interpretation of this argument can be used to, by someone. To persecute supporters of a grassroots organization instead of millions of dollars spent by a conglomerate. Um, to be clear, I absolutely do support this bill, but I want to ensure that there are no hiccups or unforeseen consequences that could lead. To its death in committee or abuse, once it becomes law. Uh, this could transform how our state runs elections, and I don't want to see our democracy fall anymore than it already has. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Next up is Ted Bowlen in support. Uh, Victor Ramos in opposition. Andrew Crossland in opposition, Stephen Munkelt in support. Um, Beena Clintock in support, Nanea, Nanea Low in support, Jessica Kruzmeyer in support, Jennifer Chiu in support, Josh Frost in support. Trisha Blair in support. That's all the testimony we have on SB three eleven. Does anyone, anyone else wish to testify on SB three eleven? Yep, sure. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Rhodes, Vice Chair Gabbert and Senators and Lena Ventura. Kat Brady testifying on behalf of Community Alliance on Prisons. We're in strong support of this measure. We think money is not free speech. And we have seen the evidence of Citizens United, and we don't want to see that happen here.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to testify on SB three eleven? Okay, seeing now members' questions? Um. We don't have any questions either. Um, let's, let's go ahead and move on to the next bill. Uh, which is SB three thirteen. This is relating to a wealth asset tax. This establishes a wealth asset, asset tax of one percent of the state. Net worth of each individual taxpayer who holds twenty million dollars or more in assets in the state. Um. First up on SB three thirteen is Gary Suganama, Suganama, Suganuma? Or somebody else?
On his behalf.
Of Prime Taxation. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Winston Wong. I'm the Administrative Rules Officer at the Department of Taxation, appearing on behalf of Gary Suganua, Director of Tax. Uh, the department has submitted its own comments and written testimony with a few key concerns over this bill. Um, I'll be available for any questions you may have after.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next is Mark Fukunaga for Coalition to Save Hawaii's Family Business. Good morning.
Morning.
Businesses, sorry.
Aloha, Chair Rhodes, Vice Chair Gabbert, members of the committee. Uh, I am Mark Fukunaga, uh, Executive Chair of Circle Pacific. But I'm here representing the hundred and twelve family businesses that are members of the Coalition to Save Hawaii's Family Businesses. Um, we respectfully oppose uh, Senate Bill three thirteen for several reasons. One is, um, from the family business perspective, it is not easy to value a family business. It is not like a stock portfolio or bank accounts, which are easily determined. Um, valuing a business means retaining valuation experts, means going through the future projections of the company. Um, and it's not, uh, and valuing real estate, which also requires principles. So the whole process obviously depends on the size and complexity of the business, but can frequently runs in the mid uh, uh, five figures, fifty thousand or so. A year that you would have to continuously do. It also requires a lot of time and um. Uh, requires the disclosure of very sensitive company information. Because you're looking at projections forward in the way of revenues, opportunities, risks, profit margins, et cetera, et cetera. So if that were to somehow be disclosed, that could be very damaging to a family business. Um, on the substantive impact, um, because family businesses are not publicly traded. There is no easy way for a shareholder to raise funds to pay the tax. So ultimately, this becomes a tax on the family business. Because that's where the, where the cash will have to come from. Because the shareholder, family shareholder does not have a public exchange to easily sell, sell a few shares. So effectively, um. Uh, on a family business, you're gonna.
Thanks very much, your time has expired.
Okay.
Uh, next up is Tommy Amachika for the Tax Foundation of Hawaii, or someone else from the Tax Foundation of Hawaii. Good morning.
Good morning. Uh, this is Jay McMillan on behalf of Tommy Amachika for the Tax Foundation of Hawaii. Uh, we've submitted some comments on the measure. Uh, we will go ahead and stand on our written comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Ted Kafalas, uh, Director of Strategic Campaign for Grassroots, Grassroots Institute of Hawaii. In opposition, next is Victor Ramos in opposition, next is Scott Smart in opposition, next is Michael Older. Good morning. Good morning again.
Good morning, Members of the Committee. My name is Mike Older, testifying for SB three one three. Uh, I support this bill. If the rich and affluent want to claim own and own parts of Hawaii, they should pay. Their fair share, or at least part of it, to the too many. Hawaii is a postcard and a house here is a trophy. They exploit the island as a symbol of status and wealth. If the people who call this island home have to scrap to uh just to make ends meet. Then the then those who have the means to do so. By almost a hundredfold, uh should also at least attempt to. That way, they might finally realize that Hawaii is more than a postcard or a trophy. That it's a home that has been exploited for far too long. And deserves better stewards than those to think so shallowy of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Kyone Shizuma. Uh, in support. That's all the written testimony we have in SB three one three. Would anyone else like to testify in SB three one three? Seeing none, members' questions?
Yeah.
Senator Simon of Ventura.
No tax. Uh, you know, what surprised me about your. Testimony is you did not ask for an appropriation. Because it seems to me. If we implement this. You're gonna need forms. I mean, it's not like an inheritance tax where there are already probate forms that automatically value, so. It's easier to value, but. You know, I have. Just trying to figure out my own asset. How do you value? I know I know it's less than twenty million, but then we have. Inheritance. Of things that we have never valued before. Um. Don't you think you need like an appropriation amount to the if you're gonna implement this? And how often are you going to? Like inheritance, it's upon death. You know, probate requires evaluation. How do you? I mean. How do you implement this?
Sure, um, as to your first question, Senator, um. As to the appropriation, I I think our testimony articulated there, there are some gaps in this bill, um the scope of it. Um, the actual administration of it is still a little ambiguous. Um, we've asked for some clarification in order to administer that. I think administration would depend on ironing that out. We don't know how much exactly. It would it would cost to administer administer something like this at the moment, just because those details are a little unclear. Um, to your second point as to how this would be administered, um, I think the bill. Lays out that this would be an annual tax. Um, it says that the wealth tax would be imposed at the same um time period as the income tax under chapter two thirty-five. So our expectation is based on the current language of the bill, this would be assessed every single year. So every year, um, a taxpayer or an individual. Would have to evaluate their estate, or I guess their their individual portfolio to see if they meet that twenty million dollar threshold. Um, as to the. Administration of this tax, just generally um in regards to the inheritance tax and the state taxes. Um, this would be different from that, right? A state and inter- inheritance taxes are um imposed or assessed at the time you have a death, right? If you have a death or somebody who deceives or passes away, um, then at that time their state is valued. Um, this would happen, as mentioned earlier, as an as a sort of annual um. An annual valuation of somebody's estate, even though they haven't passed away. So um, this would be an entirely different tax. It would be distinct from the estate tax. Um, it would be imposed at the same time period as the income tax, but I think that we've laid out that this would be different from an income tax because again. Um, the income tax is unrealized gains. If you sell something, then you receive cash in exchange or you receive consideration. Um, once you realize that gain, that's when the income tax is assessed, whereas at this point. Um, you may have not realized a gain, but um it the incumbent, it would be incumbent on you um based on this law. To still realize and realize if you had any gains or valuations changes from the prior year.
So, I'm sorry. Seems to me that it it the way you said it. If this bill passes, it's gonna be a voluntary assessment of your assets. Annually, just like, I guess. Regular taxes. And it'll be part of the N eleven form. So you still need to. Make changes to the N eleven form, and I remember. In other bills, whenever you folks make a change in tax forms, you can have. An appropriation amount. So why don't? If it's gonna be voluntary, don't you folks have a standard appropriation? I mean, request?
Well, with this particular, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, or otherwise you think you guys can do it for free, in which case I'm. Um.
No, we I I think that, you know, the. The department's ability to administer this with um the current funding, well, it would not suffice. Plain to say, but there's not enough information about the scope of the law, the. The exact administrative rules we would need, um, the forms that we have, the N eleven, it would not, it would not apply. We would not be able to use the N eleven as is. To impose the wealth tax. Um, the N eleven is an income tax form. This would need entirely new forms. We would have wealth tax form, both tax forms. We would have wealth tax tax instructions, um, and entirely new framework to administer this. Um, the runway on this, I think we noted that it would not be feasible to impose this in the next year, just. Nearly impossible, given the the complexities at stake here. Um, because of those complexities, I'm sorry that we didn't include language requesting appropriation, but. It it is almost too early to tell. We could ask for an unspecified appropriation, in which case you would ask me. Perhaps, how much do you need? And that that doesn't, we don't have that answer, but I I can confirm that we would need an appropriation, but. Um, at the time, the the bill is just too ambiguous to really um get a grasp of the entire scope of um the resources needed to administer it.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Other questions, Sir Gabbard?
How about if it was imposed uh once every three years? Would that be more workable?
It would be less of a burden on on taxpayers, and I I think just circling back to um. Senator San Benadatoura's comment that this is a a voluntary tax. Um, I I hate to admit this in front of everybody, but all of our taxes are voluntary. Almost ninety-five percent of our revenues come in through voluntary compliance. We rely on our taxpayers to fill out their tax returns or information. And we have auditors, we have an enforcement section, but most of that is really just to keep people honest. Um, taxes are really paid by folks. Um voluntarily complying with their taxes. Um, so a three-year sort of window or period or reassessment every three years would be certainly less burdensome on taxpayers. Um, a- at the same time, I don't think it would make administration any less burdensome for the department. Because we would still have to implement an entirely new tax. Um, all that would be the same. Um, it would be entirely separate and distinct from the G E T T A T inheritance tax and income taxes. Um, another thing to note about our current taxes, our income taxes, inheritance taxes, these are pretty complex, right? Um, but they also mirror the feds. So when we have our income tax and our inheritance tax, we're able to administer them with all of their nooks and crannies, all their credits and deductions and all of these. Random conformities, um, because they have a federal framework that we can look to, right? If there's a blank there. We can just look to the federal, to the IRC, the federal law, and we can conform to it. Um, in this case, we would be starting from scratch, right? Um, the feds don't have a wealth tax currently. So we would have, we would have to have a significant runway to really create our own and craft our own wealth tax code. Uh, we couldn't just conform to it like we do with the inheritance or the well, or the um or the income taxes. Thank you.
Okay, other questions? Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Fukunaga, are you still here? Well, I guess, I think I think your testimony, you testified that either some uh you represent a hundred and twelve families, is that right?
Yes.
Um, in twenty twenty, of course, the the tax as it's set up in this bill would be. Uh, one percent of the amount over twenty million dollars. Is that going to affect? You all hundred and twelve families?
I think a good number of them. I mean, the reality is any family business that owns real estate is is. Gonna have a lot of assets right there. Um, so I would say yes, I think it will affect quite a number of them. Um, I would say in some cases um of what I call asset-rich, cash-poor businesses like farms and ranches. Um, they will probably have to liquidate acreage to pay for this tax.
Okay, so what, yes. But I mean, that that all depends on how much above twenty million dollars they're worth. I mean, if they're if they're twenty-one million dollars, then one percent of one million is. Ten thousand.
Yes, there.
That's like the credit card debt for even for someone at my income level.
I think there are some businesses that are significantly above that. And I would say that that is a significant expense. In in Surfco's case, for example. We um dividend out one percent of our estimated value, so this bill would require to us to double that. The reason why we only take out one percent as dividends is we reinvest in the business to stay competitive.
But I guess, I mean, I guess for. For ninety-five percent of the population, probably ninety-seven percent of the population. If we read our, if if this was a, if this was law and we had a. And we were looking at our tax forms at the end of the year and it and it said, you know. Beware that there's a wealth tax for those who may that have more than twenty million dollars in access act. Um, in assets. Uh, ninety-seven percent of us would be like, oh, let me think, no.
That's probably right.
And but and that would be it.
But I would say there are some very important businesses here, Kamaka Ukulele's Food Land, City Mill. Um, Ula Polakua Ranch, uh Big Island Candies, Sig Zane. That are probably above that that threshold. And and what is unfair about this is this tax. Essentially penalizes a business for being locally owned. So business, Hawaii business that's owned by someone on the mainland, someone in Asia is not is not taxed.
It would be a Hawaii state tax, so I mean, I don't know. It's uh like anything else, you pay in Hawaii only.
No, but it's, but uh the Hawaii business owned by someone on the mainland. Is exempt from this tax because the mainland resident is not subject to it. As I mentioned, in a private business. The tax really falls on the business itself. So if you happen to be a Hawaii resident who's a shareholder in a Hawaii business, you're subject to it. But not a mainland-owned business or a public company. Public companies do not pay this at all.
If you had to file on Hawaii, you'd you'd be subject to it, so it doesn't necessarily mean you're a resident. In that case, I was just curious, how many, how many, how many of the hundred and twelve families, I mean that? Uh, that's that's a lot, that's a lot of money.
I would say it's a significant number.
Okay, all right. Other questions? Okay, thanks very much. We'll go on to the next bill, uh SB. Three sixty-one, permanently is this bill permanently establishes and appropriates the community outreach court as a division of the District Court of the First Circuit. Uh, first up on three sixty-one is. Um. Judge. Haya, District Court Judge, First Circuit. Did I mispronounce your name? Oh, no, it's not you anyway. Okay, I'm sorry. Good morning.
Good morning.
Did I mispronounce his name?
Judge Thomas Haya.
Hi, okay, that's right. Okay, good.
Good morning, Chair Rhodes, Vice Chair Gabbard, and members of the committee. My name is Tina Anna Vaah, and I'm the Section Administrator for the Specialized Program Services Section. Which includes the Community Outreach Court. I'm here today to express the judiciary's strong support for Senate Bill three sixty-one. The Community Outreach Court, established in two thousand seventeen, addresses the legal needs of Hawaii's vulnerable populations, including those experiencing poverty. And homelessness. Operating as a mobile court in non-formal, community-oriented settings, it resolves nonviolent cases through alternative sentences like community service. While connecting participants with social services to help them regain stability. We currently hold court in Kakaako, Wainai Kanihohe. We just started in Waimea last year, and next month will hold our first Makali Mobiili Public Library hearing. The judiciary must evolve to meet society's changing needs. Community Outreach Court exemplifies this mission by bringing justice directly to the communities where people live. Ensuring that individuals have access to the legal system in a way that is accessible, equitable, and responsive to their unique challenges. Current, uh, to date, the COC has assisted almost seven hundred participants, cleared nearly eleven thousand cases, lifted more than seven thousand drivers' lives in stoppers, and recalled over nine hundred bench warrants. The judiciary strongly supports passage of Senate Bill three sixty-one. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Uh, next up, we have Karen Tomasa, Deputy Public Defender. Good morning.
Good morning. Um, and good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. I I am not Karen, I'm Haley Chang. I'm the First Deputy of the Office of the Public Defender. Um, and we are. Um, in strong support of this bill to permanently establish the Community Outreach Court in the First Circuit. Um, ultimately, we hope to see an expansion to the neighbor islands, but we just wanted to. Um, express and echo the sentiments of the judiciary and also convey firsthand. Um, from our office, who represents those individuals, um, and actively participates in the Outreach Court. Uh, what a tremendous impact it has had on our community members. A district court is truly the people's court. Um, and as referenced in our testimony, and I think in some of the other testimony that was submitted. Uh, meeting these people out in their communities, helping them resolve nonviolent, oftentimes houseless-related offenses. Has tremendously impacted and improved the efficiency of the system as well as. Address the underlying needs of these individuals. So I will be available for any additional questions, but um again, we do stand in strong support of this measure. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, before we proceed, I'm not gonna call a recess, but I am gonna go put my coat jacket on because I'm about to start shivering just a moment. Okay, next up is uh Paul Mao for prosecuting attorney. I guess a phone of.
Yes, thank you.
Phone a little yet, oh yeah. I'm sorry, is it out? Did I call you?
That's correct. Thank you very much. Sir, uh. Department of Prosecuting Attorney is in support of this bill. Uh. Last year, we raised some objections to it, and it's primarily because. Uh, it rescinded Act fifty-five, and Act fifty-five had a section four that spelled out the process. Uh, of which how this program is carried on, you know, one is it had to ensure that. The persons that were eligible for this program were nonviolent, nonfelony offenders. And that prosecutor's office would have the opportunity to review these individuals that are up for the program, work in cooperation. With the Office of the Public Defender to determine, you know, which ones were suitable. Uh, this bill has some major improvements. In that it includes now a section five, which was not included in last year's bill. That addresses many of the concerns that our office had last year. So what I would say is, uh, there remains one area that is a, needs a little bit of clarification, and I spelled it out in my written testimony. Prosecuting attorney uh would review the list of cases for city and county of Honolulu cases to determine defendants eligible for participation in the program. Uh, we would further enter into plea negotiations with the public defender for the disposition of those cases. That we determined uh were appropriate, and it's our cases, basically what I'm saying, we would handle. But the question would be, what happens in the instance where the case? You know, is one that's brought by the Attorney General's Office? Which Judge Haya, in a separate discussion, had raised, you know, they would like to include those kinds of cases as well. Uh, we're not against that. But we wanna make sure that the Attorney General follows a similar process to what we follow, you know, that they'll review their cases. And that they will be the ones that will work with the uh public defender for it. We don't believe it would be appropriate for the Attorney General to decide. Uh, our cases or vice versa.
Your time's expired.
Okay, thank you very much. So I'm open for questions.
Next up is Alan Johnson, Chair of the Hawaii Substance Abuse Coalition. In support, next is Opportunity for Youth Action Hawaii, also in support. Uh, that's all the written testimony we have on SB three sixty-one. Does anyone else wish to testify in SB three sixty-one? Sure, come on up. Morning.
Good morning. Angela Melody Young, um, testifying in strong support. So, um, on behalf of Law Care's Community Advocacy Research Education Services, so CARES provides research. Um, and in our generation, you know, we've learned in high school to look up things from library class, so. We don't have to go to the physical library like the prior generation. So although I'm not an attorney or anything, I'm here just to present um as a member of the public, an American citizen. Um. I focus on debate and advocacy to affect policymaking uh in Hawaii. So I'm gonna read from legitimate. Um, websites, which everybody can do, and our specialty is a word that we present and simplify data points. Um, so unfortunately, I was not able to submit testimony with graphics to highlight these data points, um, so I would just provide a verbal testimony. Okay, so, um. For the common goals of various community outreach. Um. Programs at the local and national level, I would first go with the scope of work. Looking from. It's. uh, from where I So it talks about how the goal of the Community Outreach Court is to assist nonviolent offenders who are charged with offenses that disproportionately impact the homeless community. And it refers to, um, traffic of criminal infractions that have monetary fines and fees and can be prohibitively expensive and deep for many people, especially when it becomes a vicious cycle of compounding tickets and individual who realistically never be able to pay. Um, so we don't want the system to be flooded with, um, these cases, um, because there's people having mental problems and have a hard time with upward mobility in society to get to common goals. And so resolving these cases with this.
Pretty much your time has expired. Does anyone else wish to testify on SB three sixty-one? Seeing now members' questions? Um, could I have a judiciary backup? Or did she leave? Oh, there you are. Okay. So do you have an estimate of the number of positions and the salaries that you would need to, um, carry out this this, this bill of it?
It asked for two court clerks, one bailiff, another clerk, three social workers, um, the DPD, paralegal, I believe they asked another clerk, prosecutor as well.
Was that, was that in your testimony?
No.
No, okay. Okay. So you needed seven full-time equivalents total?
I think that that doesn't include the attorneys and the paralegals.
Okay. Maybe you could figure out what you need and let us, let me know. Would that be acceptable?
Absolutely.
Okay. And so that's the, uh, that's the, uh, the canal side of it, but then is there an oper- or are there operating expenses that would be specific to this as well?
Um, we had asked for, uh, security sheriffs.
Can you come up with a figure for that as well?
I will be able to.
Okay, great. Thank you. Yeah, okay. Yeah, um, can I have, um, Mr. Mao up, please? Yeah, so what, same questions, basically. What do you, what do you need in terms of personnel and?
Sure, I, I believe that, um, actually, starting on page eight and as part of section four, it lists the number in, within the bill proposed for the positions with, if I think it says, you know, for the judiciary as well as this up. I'll go to the section. Uh, I guess that refers to us. Okay, so, oh, here, it's on page, um, eleven. It says one full-time, uh, deputy prosecuting attorney, one paralegal, and one legal assistant. However, you know, one point that I'd like to make is.
So the question is, is what, what's the dollar amount that you need?
I, I can provide that.
Okay, that's fine. Please do.
One point of reference I'd like to make is the, when we have a, uh, funding for a prosecutor, prosecutors are assigned to more than, you know, the Community Outreach Court. They may have other.
Yeah.
Which they did, and so would it be a?
Oh, I'll let you, I'll let you figure out what you need and let, please let us know.
That's fine.
Let's see, who else do we need to talk to? Um, public defender, are you still here? Same question.
Um, and likewise, Senator Rhodes, we currently do have one designated public defender uh, who, um, rotates through the Community Outreach Court assignment. Um, like Mr. Mao referenced, we don't have the ability to designate that individual permanently to COC. They do do other matters. Um, and but we will definitely work on numbers. Um, we did have a social work, uh, position, does it totally designated to COC. She recently left um, to pursue other, um, opportunities, but I, I can provide that information. I would note um, for the paralegal position, the Office of the Public Defender currently does not have any paralegals. Um, so we would have to probably work with the Department of Budget and Finance to um, discuss the creation of a whole new position, um, and allocate and see what the money, monetary amount would be for a salary.
I think currently the bill says three full-time equivalents for public defender.
Yes, so we.
No dollar amount.
No dollar amount, yeah. So we would have to figure out that we've. Absolutely.
Something on that, that would be great.
Thank you.
Anybody from the sheriffs here? No, okay.
I have questions.
Okay, hang on just a second. Let me be sure I've got everything done on that. Yeah, okay, go ahead.
I see, um, Judge Kim here. Could you come on up? And I know it's not for this bill, but I am concerned that this is only Oahu. And you and I are from the big island. Do we need a community outreach court over on the big island?
Not at this time.
Not at this time.
Only because of the size of the island, um, and the security matters, the amount of sheriffs that we have. It's not that it can't be, and this is Robert Kim, Chief Court Administrator, Third Circuit Court. It hasn't been, um, it has been discussed, but our, our difficulties are different, yes, totally different, as, as I explain later about the big island.
Okay, yeah, so you, you just need a an additional district court and at this time, um, we do not have the ability to even implement a pilot program for our community outreach court on the big island?
Anything is possible, but we haven't been asked to look at it in, in terms from the legislature. Um, but discussing among ourselves, we're implementing programs, uh, to eliminate, um, excessive fines and fees, working, uh, right now Kanani Law Back in Hilo is, um, basically set up a project where we're getting people who drive without license and we're trying to work with the prosecutors and the public defenders to basically consolidate them all, have a program through Drug Court. So in other words, we don't want to have perpetual people who don't have the funds, who are just stuck in the system. So we're trying to implement it that way. And so that's how we're doing it now, but you know, if we have a statement from the ledge that they're interested or a resolution, we'll look at that too.
Sorry, when? Going on this. Okay, so, um, Judge Kim, I, I, I know that you were prior to being Circuit Court Judge and Administrative Court Judge, you, you used to do private practice. And so community outreach is a form of diversion. And we tried back even when I was in the house, a diversionary program with them the police judge, I mean, with Police Chief Ferrera, which didn't really go anywhere. And at that time, we actually funded as part of Hana Zones program, like a three hundred thousand dollar pilot for a diversionary program. Would if I request, and I'm going to probably request, um, a pilot for you folks to look at, a study uh, for diversionary programs such as community outreach for such as community outreach court for a amount of a hundred thousand. Is that something that you folks can implement?
We'll work with the legislature, but I can't comment if that number is sufficient. You have to remember, community outreach programs, um, are a lot of intensive work on the prosecutor's office. They're the ones who have to get it all ready, have to determine the amount. So we have to bring in, uh, Kelvin Walden to basically see if they can do it. Um, and so it's not just a judiciary function. It's.
Okay, okay, then I'll hold on for now. Thank you, Judge Kim.
Thank you. Other, any other questions on SB three sixty-one? Seeing now, let's go ahead and move on to the next bill. This HB four twenty-eight. This increases the fees paid to witnesses in civil and criminal trials, changes the fee paid for travel expenses from twenty cents a mile of the mileage allowance prescribed by the Administrator of General Services. First up on four twenty-eight is Haley Chang, Chong, uh, public defender.
Thank you. I will stand in support of the testimony and be available.
Great, thank you. Um, that's the only person who's testified, uh, signed up to testify in SB four twenty-eight. Anyone else like to testify in SB four twenty-eight? Okay, seeing now members' questions? Okay, hearing now, and let's go ahead and move on to four thirty-five. This relates to voting, requires the Office of Elections to include a notice to voters that a digital and print voter information guide is available. Has some requirements, felt what that would look like. Uh, first up on SB four thirty-five is Scott Naggo, Chief Election Officer. Good morning.
Morning. Uh, the office was standing, it's written testimony and support, but we have got, like to note that, um, to implement this, we would request a ninety thousand dollar appropriation.
Okay, okay, thank you. Next up is Janet Mason, Legal, uh, Legal Women Voters of Hawaii in support. And that's all the written testimony we have on SB four thirty-five. If anyone else like to testify in SB four thirty-five? Seeing now members' questions? Yeah, Mr. Naggo. So we were trying to find the, the, uh, there's a, uh, there's a website notification apparently that would lead you to this voter guide that we used last, around last year. Um, but we couldn't, when we were looking for the general election website notification, where is it in the website?
So on our webpage, um, there are sliders that pop up that will change every so many seconds, and it was right there on the beginning.
On a slider.
Yeah, and there was, there was also another link that was a little harder to get to, but from the, from the homepage, it would have been on a slider.
Okay, and there was one available for the primary as well?
Yes.
So yeah, okay, so I, I don't know. It was, we had a hard time finding that and I just don't know, um, I, I don't know. I don't know if I need to, it, it seemed like it was difficult to find, so, uh, the bill proposes making, uh, uh, making it easy to find on the website and then also just notifying everybody, I believe. Is that ninety thousand dollars will be enough?
Yeah, so we currently do, um, we currently have the slider up, which would be put equivalent to a banner. We do, um, put it in instruction. So the only thing we don't do in this um, bill would be that insert um, that would be included in the envelope and that's what the ninety thousand dollars be for printing and inserting.
Okay, and in terms of being ready for the next election, you'd be able to do that, no problem?
Yeah, so the issue we ran into being this, the first time was the translations, um, being the second time, there's always things we can do better that we'll look at, getting it out sooner.
Okay, and the timelines themselves for the twenty-one days before the primary and fifty before the general, that's doable?
Yeah, so we had it actually up thirty days for the primary and twenty-five for the general, but, um, like I said, we ran the translations, so this being the second time, we know what to expect, so we can work to get it up sooner.
Okay. Okay, other questions, members? If not, thank you very much. We'll go ahead and move on to the next bill, which is SB five twenty-six relating to women's court, establishes a temporary three-year women's court pilot program within the Second, Third, and Fifth Circuits. Uh, first up on five twenty-six is Judge Kim, Chief Court Administrator. Morning again.
Chairman Rhodes, Vice Chair Gabbard, members of the committee, thank you. As you saw in my testimony and noted by Senator from the big island, uh, this is not part of the judiciary budget. This is a movement, um, by the legislature because of the success in the First Circuit. And we all saw, um, at opening, what success, um, can be achieved. But what I'm here to tell you is because this is not something from us to the legislature, the systems out on the outer island are completely different than the systems on Oahu, which has the resources, not only in-house, but also all of the mental health resources on the island of Oahu. We don't have that. And so being pragmatic, our position is it's a good idea. Women's court is a good idea, but in order to implement it, you can either have, you can either, we, we can either have a study done and we can tell you what is needed to get it done, or because big island is MacGyver, we can basically go back and look, I mean, my colleague from D, D O H indicated from their perspective, you need eight hundred thousand dollars for the mental health aspect of what is needed. In my testimony in speaking to Drug Court, I think that we could try to fashion this program within the Drug Court because we have the structure. It would be a women's, uh, court, but there are problems because of the way of our structure, if I could just elaborate. Um, we have two major courts, one in Hilo, one in Kona. And so what would you want? Would you want it just in Kona or Hilo, or would you want both? So that's number one. We need a mental health component. Particularly the Drug Court Program on the big island has twenty-five women. We will not send in a lot of women from the big island to prison.
Uh, I'm sorry, your time's expired, but if you could hang around for questions, we can continue the conversation. Thank you. Uh, next up is, uh, Behavior Health Administration for Department of Health.
Good morning. Hi, I, I, my name is, uh, Dr. Keith.
Just pull the mic a little round. Yeah, or sit in front of it.
Uh, Dr. Keith, Department of Health, I, I'm really glad that Judge Kim went before me. Uh, we've met a long time ago. Um, I oversee the forensic programs in the wall. And I, I did a budget, uh, we did collaborate with the, with judiciary on Oahu. It was a pilot project and they utilized my staff, the assessments, and I do agree with Judge Kim. It, when we do travel to the neighbor islands, it is a different environment and uh, we, we do have to do things differently. We can't take what we have on Oahu and replicate it in different islands because it's, it's ve- very unique. And when I do travel and sit in for Kauai or Maui uh, to fill in for the shortage of staff there, we, we, we have to do things a little different. So, um, we call it women's court, but it still applies. And when we talked outside, it made sense what Judge Kim was saying. We still utilize the same treatments, uh, but the courts might be completely different and I, I don't know how to best explain it, but, um, having traveled to all the different islands to cover for the shortages, uh, even our, uh, forms might be different, but the services are, are more abundant on a wall than they are in different islands. And so we do, with the Department of Health, um, when we do service patients, uh, they do cover the different islands, Maui, Kauai, um, and the big island. So it would be nice to have services sent there. And this would help the big island in a diversion program as well, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Now, next is Haley Chung from Office Public Defender. Again.
Morning again. Um, our office is in support, um, of this measure to establish women's court in the other circuits. Uh, we are not at all dismissive of the logistic concern, logistical concerns that Judge Kim and Dr. Pedro have raised. Um, and we share in those concerns because our office is the one that represents the majority of the women, uh, who are currently in the First Circuit and will likely do the same in the other circuits. However, um, I just want to express our support for the idea of the bill that our office will work with, uh, the judiciary, the legislature to continue to expand services like this. I personally have petitioned several women in to the current women's court program and I um, have seen firsthand what an impact these specialized and gender responsive services have made in the lives of my clients who ultimately we hope to divert away from long-term incarceration. Their needs truly are unique. Um, and it has just been a blessing to have it here in the First Circuit, and whether it looks identical to what we have established here on Oahu, I'm hoping that in some way, shape, or form, we're able to create some sort of gender responsive um, specialty court for our, uh, women in the criminal legal system. So I will also make myself available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, next up is Rebecca Lee Kate, Prosecuting Attorney for Kauai in support. Maui Prosecuting, uh, Prosecutor's Office also in support. Uh, Kat Brady, uh, Community Alliance on Prisons. Morning again.
Morning. Judiciary Committee Kat Brady testifying on behalf of Community Alliance on Prisons in strong support. You know, um, listening to Judge Kim really resonated because. You know, um, listening to Judge Kim really resonated because we don't even have enough mental health services on Oahu. So it is a huge problem for the neighbor islands that are really resource poor and we should. I love the bill because it's been really terrific on Oahu. It's made a difference in lots of families' lives. And I think we should do it, but we need to be careful to make sure that each circuit actually has input into what they actually need to make it work. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Uh, next is uh Alan Johnson for Hawaii Substance Abuse Coalition. In support. Stephen Munkelt for Legal Women Voters also in support. Uh, Lynn Castalas Matsooka, Executive Director for Kapilani Sex Abuse Treatment Center in support. Dara Carlin in support. That's everybody who signed up for SB five twenty six. When anyone else like to testify on, please come on up.
Angela Melody Young testifying on behalf of Four Cares um in strong support. So proposed amendment under number one. Uh, trauma-informed care specialized and tailored for women offenders provided by um women professionals. So this is to create equity in the criminal justice system and to address underlying roots of a system that doesn't have enough services for women offenders. For equitable female gender representation. Research reflects that for women, histories of abuse, trauma, poverty, mental illness, substance use disorders, addiction, and unhealthy relationship patterns are perpetuated. And this set of disadvantaged health disparities intersects with women's um entry into the criminal justice system. Women especially experiencing distribution effect of incarceration and recidivism because of generational trauma of domestic violence that gets passed down from one generation to the next. Women experiencing racial disparity, Hawaiian women, uh Pacific Islanders, people of color and um immigrant women uh are amongst those who suffer the worst from health disparities that makes this vulnerable and marginalized women susceptible to experiencing cycles of domestic abuse, mental health problems, anxiety disorders, drug addictions, which impact uh their behavior and offenses in community life. So um the enactment of this mandate will set a new standard within the court system for women offenders uh to provide adequate uh court um programs for women. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to testify on SB five twenty six? Seeing on members questions?
Judge Kim, come on up. So um, as Chair of Health and Human Services, uh, there are promising developments, at least on east side, and I know west side is um. We need to catch up, but there are promising developments with Hope Services, collaboration with Ohana Health Plans in creating like fifteen mental health uh supportive housing and and uh my talks with Dan Brinkman has actually, we're actually increasing more behavioral health beds over on east side. So my question is this. Maybe it's too soon because like community outreach, you folks don't really know how to implement. And if you don't know how to implement, you're not going to be able to fill in the blanks as to how many personnel and how much it's gonna cost. But how about a study starting from east side? Okay, seeing how well it works and a delayed implementation of like twenty twenty seven. Even though it's promising, I I have concerns after two days ago when there was a freeze on federal grants as to whether or not we can continue on the progress on the east side because they are dependent upon Medicaid payments to continue. But I think um would you be willing to instead of having blank? Having blank amounts on personnel to just have a study, like a three hundred thousand dollar study for implementation of 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 a women's court?
That's legislative prerogative um.
But will you be able to implement it? I don't like being able to push for an appropriation, just like I did eight years ago and, you know, Chief of Police at that time refused to implement a diversion program. Would you be able to implement it?
We'll do whatever the legislature finds um appropriate. I'm just saying your choices are because this is coming from outside in, we can do a study and, you know, come up with what we think will work, or if because of the momentum, and that's why I'm here, it's important. Uh, we realize the momentum in the legislature that you have from the Women's Caucus and and other uh groups because of the success in Oahu. That if we wanted us to, MacGyver will come up with something. If you want to do a study, we'll do that too. You know what I'm saying?
The the way the bill is written, though, it has blank amounts for social worker positions appro- blank amounts of appropriation, and we're gonna need to figure out what those amounts are.
I agree, and but that's from the legislator looking in.
Right.
And what you want is from us.
Right.
From within saying, okay, if the mission is to do this, this is what we need. And I'll tell you, we're looking at it from the standpoint of the mental health. Okay, we have twenty five women in drug court right now, but a lot of women get turned away because they are high maintenance, they're dual diagnosis, they have mental health problems, trauma, PTSD, abuse, child abuse, um uh domestic abuse, and they have drug addiction to basically have a painkiller for for what they're trying to face. And when we don't have the mental health resources to be able to divert them, everything is on Oahu. The DOH is struggling to try to help us because of the lack of personnel on the Big Island. And so I just want to articulate what we see and where we're gonna need the help. So if we do do a study from the Third Circuit, that's what we'll be pointing to. Yeah, in my testimony, I indicated um contract psychologists, psychiatrists, because we're turning them away because the probation department cannot spend that much time with individuals which are high maintenance because we don't have mental health treatment. So we stand ready um to do whatever the legislature feels is appropriate, Chairman.
But you can't tell us the figures to put in here.
Well, this is early on. If you ask us to come up with something, we'll try and um, you know, we we understand the dynamics and this is an issue, it's a hot button issue, so you you tell us.
Well, I I want to make it, you're right, we there's some momentum. I mean, on Oahu, we have the YWCA firm hearse, which is a a woman's um and we don't have something similar on on the Big Island, but um you know, the indications from my going around the Big Island and talking to the NGOs there, the like, is we're getting there on the east side and and I apologize and I have no idea why we're not doing the same. I suspect it's a higher cost of living over on the west side as to why we can't get more supportive housing there. It's just we can't even get workforce housing over in the west side, even if we can recruit medical personnel. What I'm trying to say is I want implementation because of the momentum. If the implementation is easier and faster with having X amount of dollars for a study and then next year you'll let us know the kind of personnel and how much, then I would rather do that, rather than forcing it down your throat and saying, let us know how many personnel now.
We could do that. We could, we could do a study and come back.
Which which is your preference?
My preference is.
Not to do it at all? I mean, that that's.
Well. It that's a very difficult question. We we wanna, I know it's a a good project, okay? But you have to understand, our judges on the outer islands, they do everything. They do criminal, civil, agency appeals, environmental court, drug court, we judges are stacked up, and so whatever we try to do, we have to kind of fold it in to the way our system works. And so we could do a study. Um, I just don't want to lose momentum. However, you know, we could do the study and come back
Okay.
Next session, if that's, that's your direction.
Thank you.
Good. Members, other questions? Uh, if not, I have a couple.
Yes.
So as the bill is drafted, is it it's it's, is it, okay, back up. Does it, it doesn't appear to me that it changes, it it doesn't appear to me that it would prohibit you from doing anything else like uh starting a women's division of the Big Island Drug Court, for example, do you 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 read it the same way, i.e. it it doesn't prohibit you from doing other things if you can come up with the money and.
Yes.
Have it.
Yes.
That's correct, okay.
Right, because we have twenty five women right now, we can bring more in um.
Okay, so you don't think this precludes doing other things if you wanted to?
No, as long as we have the mental health.
So in uh, you know, the the position counts uh in the bill, I think, are all blank. Well, no.
Yes.
The position counts are, oh yeah, I guess they are blank, okay. So um, I I I guess my inclination would be to go ahead and move the bill along and we would, but we would be asking you for for position counts and money uh estimates before it got, if it gets heard by the next committee, which is the Ways and Means Committee. So is that a, is that realist, a realistic expectation?
I'm sorry, so when is the next Ways and Means?
I mean, it'll be weeks, but I don't know, I don't know when exactly.
If if requested, we will MacGyver and get you.
Yeah, I think that's it. Okay, anything else? Okay, yeah, so why why don't we do this? Why don't uh i- if we pass it, if the if the committee uh agrees with my recommendation, we would make the ask that you um try to come up with the numbers, fill in the blanks and give us an estimate as soon as you can. Give it to me and then we'll pass it along to the Ways.
If that's the ask, we'll get it done.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, anything else on uh SB five twenty six?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Judge. Thanks for being here. Uh, now we'll go on, go ahead and move on to SB five ninety eight. This establishes a Hawaii Hope Card Program within the Department of the Attorney General to issue Hope Cards upon request of those holding a long-term protective order. Uh, first up on five ninety eight is Philip Higden Administrator for the HC JDC. Hawaii Criminal Justice Data Center. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman Rhodes and Committee members. My name is Phil Higden, Administrator of the Hawaii Criminal Justice Data Center. The Department appreciates the bill's intent and has submitted written testimony and comments, but if I may quickly summarize a few points, if I may.
Yes, please.
Uh, the purpose of the bill is to establish the Hawaii Hope Card Program within the department to issue cards upon request to individuals holding a long-term protective order. The card would provide details about a protective order for quick law enforcement references and eliminate the need for protective party to carry a copy of the entire order. Uh, it's important to note, due to the complexity of protective orders, condensing all the essential details onto a small card is impractical. Some orders consist of numerous pages, five to seventy. Uh, it's also the department's understanding law enforcement must must check agency records or access criminal justice systems to confirm the order's validity and determine if additional terms and extensions have been granted. I appreciate your time and I'll be available.
Thank you. Thanks for hanging around for so long. Uh, next is Director Salavaria from the Department of Budget Finance. With comments, next is Dar Carlin in support. That's all the written testimony we have on SB five ninety eight. Is anyone else wish to testify on SB five ninety eight? Seeing on members questions? I do have a question. So just verifying that you, I think it will cause, so I told so the card itself, I understand you can't have the whole protective order on the card, but is it something that at least is um a reference point for law enforcement to look up the, whatever the current status is?
Well, we, I created a card one of the staff, right? And it's it's hard to read, uh and not all, I mean, the terms can can fluctuate.
Sure.
And to, and and for a law enforcement officer, I speak as a retired law enforcement officer on the mainland. We need the entire terms to understand the validity and and understand where the protection.
Okay, so you're, so you're asking us for four uh four hundred fifty thousand dollars, two full-time equivalents in operating expenses, including website and database development, correct?
Uh, four hundred, yes, four hundred fifty to start up and then ten, a hundred, approximately a hundred and ten thereafter.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I have a question, so.
Us.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Yeah, no, no, I I I agree with you that if all the terms are stuck in that Hope Card, then it's like um impossible to enforce uh for them to look at. However, we're twenty first century. With the monies, can't you folks do like a QR code that would then go directly to the T to the website? I mean, frankly, if if everyone has the ability to just look at it on the websites, it's pretty fast. I mean, I can look up a T R O to see what the terms are. With the money, can't you folks put that technology on the Hope Card, a QR code? Everybody has a cell phone, and then you'll have the terms right there.
The informa- information may change and to access that through the criminal justice systems has to be protected, so it it's not as, it's, I understand what you're saying, uh but there are FBI policies as far as security uh as looking at something on a cell phone and accessing the Criminal Justice Data Center, the Hawaii Criminal Criminal Justice System of Hawaii. Not just anybody can access that.
But with the monies, that hopefully you're gonna let us know how much, will you be able to at least look into it and see whether or not, because otherwise just requiring a Hope Card with words on it, the size of a two font, you're not gonna be, people are not gonna be able to implement.
No, man.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions on this measure?
No.
Yes, Senator Gabbard.
Budget and finance, they seem to be unconvinced of the program's effectiveness, uh practicality and financial sustainability. I was wondering if, do you have any examples of other areas where this has been successful?
Uh, I, not at the top of my head. No, sir, I have not researched that, but I can.
Please, appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, anything else on SB five ninety eight? Seeing that, thank you very much. Thanks for staying around for so long. We'll move on to SB seven twenty two. This is um Civil Asset Forfeiture Bill. Uh, first up is the Attorney General. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman Rhodes. Good morning, Vice Chair Gabbard, members of the committee. Deputy Attorney General Steve Blamela, the Department of the Attorney Attorney General opposes this bill. We have submitted our written testimony in opposition. Asset forfeiture is a important tool in detering crime. It allows law enforcement to seize fruits and instrumentality of crime and prevent their use in future of crime. Uh, there are safeguards in the program. A, an interested person can file a claim or petition for remission or mitigation to contest asset forfeiture, and innocent owner of property cannot be forfeited. And the forfeited property cannot be disproportionate in value to the criminal offense committed. Thank you for the opportu- opportunity, opportunity, sorry, a little cold in here. Thank you for the chance to testify on the bill for that, answer any questions.
Thank you. Next is Haley Chung from the Office of Public Defender. Who is still here after two hours.
Here, good morning again.
Morning again.
Um, we submitted very comprehensive written testimony uh in support of the bill, so I'll keep my um verbal comments brief. Um, we appreciate and can understand the Attorney General's position, but the safeguards that he just referenced, we we wholly disagree with. Um, as articulated in our written testimony, we do not think there has to be an absolute direct correlation to the instrumentality of the crime. We do not believe the safeguards that he have referenced are readily and easily accessible to everybody. Um, we are particularly concerned with the um process that one must go through to challenge it. Oftentimes, people believe that because these things are associated or attached to a criminal charge, that the Public Defender's Office or your criminal counsel is able to assist you with that. The Public Defender's Office is prohibited from getting involved in civil litigation of any kind. Uh, so we are not able to assist or direct our clients um when they are the subject of the forfeiture. Um, and for all of the reasons that we listed in our written testimony, we are hopeful that we will eventually move away from civil forfeiture altogether. But in the meantime, we support this bill as it increases the available safeguards and protects our community members. and protects our community members from these types of forfeitures where they have very limited ability and are not oftentimes able to go through the process to get those things back. So thank you, and I will remain available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Next up is Rebecca Leeke, Prosecutor for Hawaii in Opposition. Kelton Walden, Kelton Walden for Hawaii County Office Prosecutor. He is the prosecutor on Hawaii County. He's in opposition. Mike Lambert for Hawaii Police Department on Zoom, perhaps.
They were here earlier, but they're not available anymore.
Okay, opposition. Yeah, that's, that's fine. I don't hear. I mean, my prosecutor's office also in opposition, Cat Brady for Community Alliance on Prisons. Morning again.
Good morning. You know, in twenty fifteen, New Mexico passed, they eliminated civil asset forfeiture. And the sheriffs and police were really upset with that, saying you're opening the door to crime, and you'll get less law enforcement from this. But then a study was done, and they found that the median forfeiture averaged one thousand two hundred seventy-six dollars across twenty-one states where usable data was obtainable. In Michigan, for example, asset forfeiture was like for a thousand bucks, for four hundred twenty-three dollars, and Pennsylvania, three hundred sixty-nine dollars. And it's been determined by the Institute of Justice that one incentive for police to target lower dollar seizures is that it's not worth challenging them. So I'm really worried that it sort of is like the door to corruption. So.
Good. Thank you very much. Next is Carrie Anne Schroeder for the A C L U of Hawaii. In support, Ted Kafalas, Director of Strategic Campaign, of Strategic Campaign, testifying for Grassroots Institute of Hawaii. Also in support, she goes to show this is one of the last bipartisan issues in the world. Alistair Whitney, Legislative Counsel for Institute for Justice on Zoom, perhaps. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the opportunity to testify this morning. As you said, my name is Alistair Whitney, and I'm Legislative Counsel at the Institute for Justice. As you know, we are a nonprofit, public interest law firm that works to protect people's civil liberties around the country. And as a part of our work, we are trying to advocate for the abolish abolition of civil asset forfeiture, replacing it with criminal asset forfeiture, and also increasing data transparency around how asset forfeiture proceeds are used. I would like to echo a lot of the comments that have already been made in support of this bill. And I would also like to note again that, you know, this bill is a welcome step in the right direction for this state. As the Institute for Justice has noted, and as you are aware, there is a room for a tremendous amount of improvements. Civil asset forfeiture, while I understand it is well-intentioned and law enforcement, I don't ascribe any nefarious sort of intent to just trying to keep the community safe. But oftentimes, people are innocent people, low-income people, people in marginalized communities are swept up under civil asset forfeiture. They can lose their property without criminal charges. And to fight those criminal charges oftentimes takes a lot of time, energy and money. Excuse me, to fight that, the forfeiture of the property also can take a lot of time, energy and money and sophistication that they may not have. That's why we see nationwide, four out of five property owner claimants default on civil asset forfeiture judgments, meaning they don't even show up to court. They can't even try to fight it because of the expense of getting an attorney, because of the complications of the legal system. So again, we strongly encourage the committee, and we thank you, Chair Rhodes, for your leadership on this issue this year and in previous years. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up, I'm sorry, next up is Lynn Matusau in support, Marian K. Kapunia in opposition, Michael Older in support. Good morning again.
Morning, members of the committee. My name is Mike Older, testifying for S B seven twenty-two. I would like to expand on my previously written testimony, civil, as stated before, civil forfeiture has been known by many as legal theft. While it has been a tool to suppress organized crime, it has a history of being weaponized for corruption with low oversight on how it's used, or how those wronged by it can get their property returned or compensated. So I support this bill, bill, as while it doesn't abolish the practice, it'll give expanded guidelines and restricted, and restrictions for its use. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Stephen Munkelt in support. That's everybody who signed up on S B seven twenty-two. Would anyone else like to testify on S B seven twenty-two? Seeing on members' questions? Pretty well-known issue at this point. Okay, if that's okay with the members, we'll go ahead and start voting. Okay, back to beginning, the agenda, we'll go to S B two eighty-six first. This makes an appropriation for criminal prosecutions to the Department of the Prosecuting Attorney in the sitting county. Let's go ahead and blank out the appropriation, and that will defect the effective date to April twenty-three, twenty fifty-seven, and we'll note the seven hundred and forty-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollar appropriation request in the committee report. Questions or concerns? Excuse me. If not, Vice Chair.
On S B two eighty-six, the chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair Rhodes.
Aye.
Vice Chair Rhodes, aye. Senator Chang.
Aye.
Senator Sanvado Ventura.
Aye.
Senator Awaz is excused. The measure passes.
Thank you, members. Next up is S B two eighty-seven. This makes an appropriation for the Victim Witness Assistance Program as a grant and aid to the sitting county of Honolulu prosecuting attorneys. Recommendation here is to move it ahead. We'll blank out the appropriation, we'll make it a defective date of April twenty-three, twenty fifty-seven, and we'll note the seven hundred and thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar appropriation request in the committee report. Questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair.
On S B two eighty-seven, Chair's recommendations to pass with amendments. Are there any no votes or reservations? Very none. The measure is adopted.
Thank you. Next up is S B eight two eight nine. This establishes uniform provisions for the assessment of administrative penalties under a thousand dollars under the State Ethics Code and Lobbyist Law and Disclosure Law. Recommendation here is to pass as is. Questions or concerns? On questions or concerns, S B two eighty-nine. Hearing none, Vice Chair.
Recommendation on S B two eighty-nine is to pass unamended. The members present, are there any no votes or reservations? Hearing none, the measure is adopted.
Thank you. Next up is S B three oh four. This establishes positions appropriate, appropriate funds for the adult services probation of the First Circuit Court. The recommendation here is to go ahead and move it along. We'll add amendments requested by the judiciary, which would mean there'd be eleven positions and a new total appropriations amount as set forth by the judiciary of nine hundred and twenty-one thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars, which seven hundred and eighty-one, two forty-eight would be salaries and a hundred and forty thousand dollars in operating expenses. So we'll blank those, we'll blank out those appropriations, put them in the committee report. And it'll be eleven positions instead of twelve, and it's the secretary position that we're dropping out. And we'll defect the date, April twenty-three, twenty fifty-seven. And we'll also add a preamble based on the judiciary's testimony explaining the recommended ratios of of clients to I don't know what the exact title is, examiners of, of the, or trying to keep, bottom line, trying to keep the caseload at levels that are thought to be more useful, and we'll put that in the preamble. Questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair.
On S B three zero four, Chair's recommendations to pass with amendments. Are there any no votes or reservations? Very none. The measure is adopted.
Hey, thank you. Next up is S B three eleven. This proposes an amendment to Hawaii State Constitution to provide that freedom of speech protection of the Hawaii State Constitution does not include the expenditure of money to influence elections. Recommendation is to pass with some amendments. We'll amend, I'd recommend amending the text of the ballot. A question, as suggested by the A D, A G, to include discussion of Buckley versus Valeo, in addition to Citizens United, and Buckley versus Valeo, which held that limits on expenditures of money to influence elections are protected speech. So the question would read, shall the Hawaii State Constitution be amended to state that freedom of speech protections under the Hawaii State Constitution do not include the expenditure of money to influence elections? The amendment would, would take effect if the United States Supreme Court overturns, Congress overrides, or an amendment to the United States Constitution invalidates the United States Supreme Court's decisions in both Citizens United and Buckley versus Valeo, which provide protection under the U.S. Constitution to expenditure of money to influence policy. And we'll amend the preamble to include the discussion of Buckley. A lot to digest all at once. Any questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair.
Chair's recommendation is to pass S B three eleven with amendments. Are there any no votes or reservations? Hearing none, the measure is adopted.
Hey, thank you. Next up is S B three thirteen. This would establish a wealth, a wealth asset tax of one percent of the state net worth of each individual taxpayer who holds twenty million dollars or more in assets in the state. This is a work in progress. I would like to try to keep it going for one more round. So my suggested amendments would be to impose it only once every three years. Start the tax collection, start collecting the tax, tax years after December thirty-one, twenty twenty-nine, so it wouldn't go into effect until twenty thirty. And we'll require D O TAC to propose implementing legislation no later than forty days before the twenty twenty-seven regular session. And then we'll add some committee report language on the negative, the negative economic effects of extreme wealth inequality, which are pretty well documented at this point. Questions or concerns? Hang on, Senator Chan first.
Thank you, Chair. I'll support your recommendation to keep the discussion going, but please do note my reservations.
Thank you. I'm sorry, and we'll put on a bad day too. So April twenty-three, twenty fifty-seven. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I, I I echo Senator Chang. I support your, I support the premise. I believe there should, there are other ways to do a wealth tax, like having a personal property tax that Florida has imposed. But having a valuation every three years and imposing upon taxpayers more work than necessary. I, I, I can't support that. So I'm gonna be voting with reservations also.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. If not, Vice Chair.
Chair's recommendations to pass S B three one three with amendments, noting the reservations with Senator Chang and Sanvado Ventura. Are there any no votes or reservations? Very none. The measure passes.
Thank you, members. Next up is S B three sixty-one. Primarily established and appropriates funds for the Community Outreach Court as a division of the District Court of the First Circuit. Recommendation here is to defect the date, April twenty-three, twenty fifty-seven, and so that's it. We'll just defect the date, and we'll hopefully get the numbers that we need before, if and when, when hears it or DMs it. Questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair.
On S B three sixty-one, Chair's recommendations to pass with amendments. Any no votes or reservations? Very none. The measure is adopted.
Thank you. Next up is S B four twenty-eight. This increases the fees paid to witnesses in civil and criminal trials, changes the fees paid for travel expenses from twenty cents a mile to the mileage allowance prescribed by the Administrator of General Services, and authorizes reimbursements to witnesses in civil trials for use of common carriers, i.e. the bus. Recommendations to pass as is. Questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair.
On S B four twenty-eight, the recommendation is to pass unamended. Any no votes or reservations? Very none. The measure is adopted.
Hey, thank you. Next up is S B four thirty-five. This requires the Office of Elections to include a notice to voters that a digital and print voter information guide is available. There was one available this last election that generally got good reviews, but it was hard to find, and it was so this bill is really an attempt to make it easier to access. So the recommendation is to go ahead and pass with some amendments. We'll insert a blank appropriation to the office, to the Office of Elections. We'll make it effective on April twenty-three, twenty fifty, twenty fifty-seven. And we'll note in the committee report that the requested appropriation amount is ninety thousand dollars. Questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair.
Chair's recommendation is to pass S B four thirty-five with amendments. Any no votes or reservations? Very none. The measure is adopted.
Thank you. Next up is S B five twenty-six. This establishes a temporary three-year women's court pilot program with the Second, Third and Fifth Circuits, which is everybody except Oahu. Recommendation here is to pass with amendments. We'll defect the date, the usual April twenty-three, twenty fifty-seven. We've asked for the information about what the courts would need to make this happen, and hopefully we'll be able to get that before Ways and Means hears it, but if you could, if you could send it to this committee, and then we'll, we'll be sure to pass it on. And that's it. Questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair.
On S B five twenty-six, your recommendation is to pass with amendments. Are there any no votes or reservations? Hearing none, the measure is adopted.
Thank you. Next up is S B five ninety-eight. This establishes the Hawaii Hope Card Program within the Department of the Attorney General. Recommendation here is to go ahead and move it forward, but we'll defect the date to of April twenty-three, twenty fifty-seven, and we'll add to committee report that the A G's testimony relating to costs required to operate the program are four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the fiscal years twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-six, twenty-seven for initial development of the program, including two full-time equivalents and operating expenses, including website and database development and identification, identification card hardware and software. And then the ongoing operational costs will be a hundred and ten thousand annually. So that's the proposed amendments. Questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair.
On S B five ninety-eight, recommendations to pass with amendments. Any no votes or reservations? Hearing none, the measure is adopted.
Thank you. Last but not least is S B seven twenty-two. This restricts civil asset forfeiture to cases involving the commission of felony offenses where the property owner has been convicted of an underlying felony. It does allow still for the seizure of property and the forfeiture of it eventually if the person is found guilty of a felony. Recommendation on S B two two, seven two two is to pass it unamended. Questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair.
Recommendation on S B seven twenty-two is to pass unamended. Are there any no votes or reservations? Hearing none, the measure is adopted.
The last bipartisan issue. Thanks very much for being here, and we'll see you tomorrow.